Because the asphalt would avoid the purchase of a material spreader for salt. The downside of this vehicle is it's very high, the only, we don't have our tractor, loader, backhoe combinations are not tall enough to load this vehicle. So we typically don't use it except for bringing out fresh material on occasion and we use it heavily in the winter. So we have two regular dump trucks. Should we lose one? We were doing street repair, we'll have one dump truck that we're hauling debris, placing debris on. We've got another truck that we keep clean and keep basically a releasing agent in it to pick up asphalt to bring the material back. Should we lose the truck, then we'll have to spend the time to clean up the spoils truck in preparation for bringing in the fresh asphalt for patching. So what it would do would be just to slow down production for the time it would take to make the change of. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just had a question on the plow and retrofit. Obviously, that would be based on the timing of next season, at least I would hope, we won't have snow at that point.
Right, yeah.
So it said the existing spreader, and I thought we had rust and corrosion.
No, the spreader is fixed in the bed. So the bed itself is rusting. However, the spreader is stainless steel. We went to stainless steel spreaders probably about eight to 10 years ago. So, you know, the routine wear items, we stay up with the bearings and the chains and that sort of stuff. So they're basically, what's worn out is replaced every year. The body themselves being stainless steel is virtually indestructible. The plow, however, is a carryover from the previous truck. Unlike the plows that we mount now, which can, the angle can change so you can alter the direction you're plowing, this is a fixed plow. The other problem with it is the trip mechanism, which is a heavy spring, has failed. So the thing will trip prematurely. We've had prices on that plow to repair it, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of six grand to make that repair. The purchase of a new plow is in the $10,000 to $11,000 range.
I was just, as I try to get familiar with these things, our relationship with the MACPT, when we send out what we're looking for, they give bids on our behalf? And do they send us all the bids or do they just tell us what the low bid came back as?
No, they send us the entire, they pretty much have the full spectrum of the typical vehicles, including dump truck chassis. Now, we have to bid the beds ourselves, but however, this is a cabin chassis combination. So they just have a list of the typical trucks. I mean, we could look for tandem axle pickups of various sizes and that sort of thing.
So they've already secured low bids from vendors?
Yes, that is correct.
And we just go to the list and say, this is what's worked out? Our partnership gives us a benefit to buy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then when these other pieces, if it's approved, then these other pieces, you'll send a bid and then come back and we'll take action on those at a separate time?
That is correct. Following our policy, if it's under 15, which the plow would probably be, many times we'll bid the bed and the plow together, just a bits on how we package it. The bed undoubtedly will be back with a recommendation to you all.
Great, thanks.
I wanted to thank you and Jody for the pictures that you sent to us. For those that haven't seen it, it shows that the cab is damaged and that one of, that the driver's side door doesn't close completely. Shows a lot of rust on the cab, shows a lot of rust in the chassis and the dump bed, as you talked about. Very enlightening, thank you.
Thank you. Christie, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, do you know, last year was probably some of the most significant snow that we had in quite some time. How, did these or ours was this unavailable?
Last winter, this, well, of course, this year we had a very insignificant event. But last winter, it was, if you looked at the history, it was in and out about like the rest of them. As I say, it's, you can't predict fully based on past performance, it's just that this truck is running out of time.
What would you do with the $108,000? What could we do if you didn't spend it on the truck? Can you replace the leaky manhole, I mean, make the leaky manhole problem go away or use the money to replace the water meters that are inaccurate? I mean, are those all things that could use as a fund?
Well, for this, since this is general fund, you could, I mean, you could put it in street repair.
I mean, you could, you could transfer the money into other projects.
Subject to your approval, yes.
I mean, I would rather see the money put into those things that would yield a return, such as the old water meters that are inaccurate or, you know, some of those energy efficiency improvements that we talked about at one time.
Well, I get from a financing standpoint that this would be a general fund item, we'd keep it in general fund repairs rather than utility fund. In that particular case, water meters-
Would be a water fund, yeah.
Would be a water fund item.
I mean, there's always so much money to go around, you could spend it on a vehicle. As I say, we feel that this vehicle is, it's time to replace, and that's our recommendation, subject to your approval. Should you choose to spend the money on other needs, we could, we could find a good place for it and make a recommendation. In this case, though, with this truck, it's been underpowered, the staff has commented about its weakness since it was bought. I can't give you the history as to why this particular model was purchased in mid-1997, but it's, it's underpowered and it's too light for the intended purpose. Is it going to break down during the next storm? Can't guarantee it, but I can't guarantee it won't.
Just curious, if, for instance, we were to keep this truck? I know the dump bed looks like it needs to be replaced. Does it, would the hydraulics need to be replaced with them?
No.
No? And I know that we've got a $15,000 estimated cost here on plow and retrofit of the existing spreader. It sounds like the plow definitely either needs a serious repair or replacement, but the spreader, would that need to be replaced?
We are not replacing the spreader, we're just, the cost in that is just to change out the controls.
Oh, okay.
No, we're salvaging that, we're changing that spreader over because it's a fine unit.
Very good. And Brian mentioned the door, and we don't want an unsafe vehicle, is there, it sounds like that door pops open on occasion, but that could probably be repaired. Is there, is there any other thing that's a safety concern?
Well, if you'll notice, as you recall from the pictures, we do have a lot of rust in the underside of the bed where the lever or the controls where you release the tailgate. There's, you know, the bed is, is, is dry.
Sorry. I think it's important to point out that we would not recommend adding a dump truck, heavy dump truck bed to a two-ton cabin chassis. That's something that we wouldn't, we just wouldn't recommend at all. And we've, we've found ourselves with that type of truck now, and we've gotten the used life out of that. And we just can't, we can't prolong its agony anymore.
How would council like to proceed?
I move we authorize the purchase of a dump truck cab and chassis from Diamond International in the amount of $67,735.
Motion, Brockstrom, Second Freeman, that we authorize the purchase of a dump truck, dump truck cab and chassis from Diamond International. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Christie?
Did we lose?
Brian, yes.
Okay, we're, we're voting on purchase, let me redo this. Move we author, there's, excuse me. A motion, Brockstrom, Second Freeman, that we authorize the purchase of a dump truck cab and chassis from Diamond International. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails. Thank you.
Again.
New business item number seven. Consider authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract for installation of a lighting, lightning protection system for the water treatment plant. David?
This is an item we're bringing to you. As indicated in the council action forum, we've, over the last three years, have had three lightning strikes at the Hillsdale Water Treatment Plant. One damaged the phone system, one damaged the SCADA system, which is the, an acronym for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. It's basically a way to remotely control and monitor your systems. And then finally, the most recent one damaged the standby generator on site. Earlier last, or last year, we did take bids on, to install a lightning protection system for City Hall. We'd had a similar incidence, received bids, it was about just under 15,000, I think it was 14,900, to install lightning rods and a UL-rated lightning suppressor to protect the electronic systems in the City Hall, plus the service entrance for the electrical system. Took the same bids, a package that we had for that. Jim Melvin requested bids, sent it out to 22 contractors, received two bids. The low bid was RF Fisher, which was the same company that installed the lightning suppression system on City Hall. What this amounts to would be lightning rods, and as I say, a suppression device that would basically be able to handle a lightning strike. The phone and the SCADA systems did have surge suppressors on it, but they were on them, but they were more for like electrical grid issues, AKA dirty power or spikes in the electrical system, which actually are, you have a power dip and then it comes back up and it's a surge. They generally don't get a spike of voltage, it's just it dips and comes back up to whatever the line voltage is, and that surge is what causes the problem. In the case of lightning, of course, it's extremely high voltage, high frequency shock, and it takes a specific type of suppression system to do that. So it's a two-pronged thing, install lightning rods to try and divert it, and then to, on the service entrance, to install a suppression that will actually be able to protect it from the lightning strike. It's not a budgeted item in the 12 budget. At this early point in the year, we would rearrange our water budget to find the money if approved. We're recommending this only because we have seen $13,000 worth of damage in the last three years. We feel it would be a good investment. Once again, I kind of like the truck, past performance can't totally predict the future, but for whatever reason, the Hillsdale Water Plant is being struck on a fairly regular basis, and we would recommend the installation of this protection system.
We had lightning yesterday evening as a matter of fact.
It is correct.
Well, yeah, I believe that predicting the weather is harder to make a prediction based on past performance, too, so. The question that I would have is, is that if we were to execute a contract with RF Fisher, do they have some kind of guarantee on the efficacy of their product and some kind of refund if we experience a lightning strike and their, and their product didn't-
Perform.
Perform?
We do have, the one thing we do, we do require before acceptance is a inspection by universal life underwriters, which is what we had on the one here.
Which, the, how, I guess I had the same concern, how would that work in regards, if the system failed and we still experienced some of these expenses because of a lightning strike again, even though we installed the system, what would the underwriting, how would that make a change in it? The inspection's one thing, but the backside support is another.
You know, I'm going to defer to Jim, do we have?
There was a warranty in there, I don't recall how long it was, manufacturer warranty for whatever system they installed, it would at least get that.
Now, in answer to your direct question, I'm sorry to say, I wasn't prepared to answer that question. All I could say is, you know, it is inspected by the UL folks, it says it meets the criteria.
Right. In the bid process, did we share with them what we'd experienced in the last three years, and did they give any sort of confidence, both that said, well, this is exactly what the system's built to deflect? Or did they speak directly to that? They just say, because as I researched this a little bit, they say these are great systems put in place, but they can't guarantee and they can't fully protect against a lightning strike because it's, at the end of the day, it's an act of God.
Right, and, you know, I'm sorry to say, I can't directly answer that question. I can tell you where we ended up with City Hall is, we did some checking, contacted folks that dealt with lightning suppression systems, had them come out and inspect, and help us write the specs for it. So as far as getting what we have, it beats the industry criteria.
Right. Were there expenses at the water treatment plant? You know, it was built in 96 and then returned in 98. Was there expenses before, are these just the three most recent, or are those the only three instances of lightning-related repairs?
These is, these are the ones that we have. I'm not aware of other ones prior to this.
Of the $13,000 in damage, were those reimbursed by insurance?
These are all under the deductible, so.
How about even with the new insurance plan that we have with NPR?
The-
I thought it had lower, it has lower deductibles, doesn't it?
Well, we have a, on the, the building-type structures, it's a $5,000 deductible, which the-
That's lower.
Phone and the SCADA would be covered, would be $5,000 deductible, which this is, no, actually, it's 67. Sorry to say, I am once again on the deductible, I don't have that information. I do know that we did not get reimbursed, so it's fairly-
Under the old policy, but the new policy, that was one of the selling points, was the deductibles were much lower.
Again, this, what this comes back to is a safety issue with the plant that produces water and brings it to your home. Staff's recommending this based on the fact that we've been struck multiple times. Why that has started occurring, I can explain, as none of you probably can either, but what we do know is these systems do help on a direct hit, probably not likely going to help, but when it's, you know, something that these systems are designed to handle, it's going to help. And when we've had these hits in the past, it's caused quite a bit of extra work for us to manage our systems out there. Those SCADA systems help control the chemicals that are introduced into the water to treat the water. They help notify staff when things are not working correctly out there, which impacts the treatment of the water. So this is, really comes down to a safety issue with a facility that produces your drinking water. So that's why staff's recommending this as one way to further reduce, one, our liabilities, and two, to ensure that if we do have those kind of ambient nearby strikes, that the systems there aren't impacted, that helps ensure the quality integrity of the city's drinking water.
From a department budget perspective, would it be easier and even perhaps more efficient to plan this as a 2013 budget expense, rather than trying to put it into the budget now and reallocating some of the funds that have been put in different areas?
That's, that's an option. I mean, we had this early in the year, we're, we're confident that we could afford this. If it'd be council's preference to put it through the 2013, we can do that, too.
Did we have loss of service due to the, the strike in 2010 that disabled the SCADA system? And how long were, was the SCADA system down in 2010?
To defer to Jim.
Before it was repaired?
The telephone system was out with the, the first strike that we had for about three days. The SCADA system was out for about 24 to 48 hours. We put that as a priority, get that back in service. And the telephone as well, because we had no telephone communication at all, sits down in a hole, there's no cell reception at the plant either. So if we don't have telephones, we just can't talk. And we need, we need to be able to do that. But it was about three days before we could get the SCADA system back up, and maybe two days, and then three days for the, for the telephone.
Any interruptions to the water supply?
No interruptions to the water supply at that time. We can run all the systems manually, it just takes more effort. We did spend some overtime, not only getting it fixed, but in running the system without it.
In any of the equipment that was damaged, I assume we didn't have any injuries as a result of this, but would, could there have been injury as a result? I mean, is this equipment that someone could have been in proximity to, on at the time when it occurred?
If it had happened during the daytime, it certainly could have been something like that, but it did happen at night when no one was at the plant.
Okay.
All three times.
So with the system that's installed at City Hall, is it, we haven't had any problems since, since it was installed? Or did we, I don't remember, you said we had problems prior to it? Or was it just-
That's correct, yeah, we had, we were having computer issues and I think the counter we had had 50 or 60 hits on it, but they were all the transits, but it was just, we were just, I think we had a computer issue, as I recall, and-
We've had multiple issues over the last nine years.
And, and they've all gone away since suppression?
Been installed a few weeks.
Yeah.
Oh, that's all?
It's been installed by months.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, you know, if it's there, we're safer than we were.
One thing, and what we need to look at also, is that we may not be able to guarantee what the system is going to do, do in the case of it, but we can pretty well guarantee what's going to happen if we don't have it.
Thank you, yes.
Right? And what we don't want to get hung up on is just the $14,000, what Jim alluded to, is the overtime that it took to run the, to run the plant in manual.
That's not to mention the downtime.
Right.
Where productivity suffers because we can't talk or operate properly.
So really, the $14,000 is on the low side.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And the other thing, too, is there's, in addition to the systems that we've talked about here, it's a fairly complex plant, there's numerous pumps, there's numerous control systems. You know, in this case, just these simpler systems were affected, more easily identified. But they are a complex process. The suppression system would protect the entire plant, other than just individual surge protectors either failing or attempting to protect the individual components.
Well, the surge protectors don't work against lightning, anyway, right?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Christie, you had a question?
Yeah, I, Stephen, you may have, so I'm sorry to hear you, but we, we don't have this problem at the Kilcree Plant, it's never been struck by lightning?
No, we haven't been hit by the, at the Kilcree Plant.
Okay.
They don't have any more, they don't have any more questions.
How would council like to proceed with regard to new business item number seven, executing a contract for installation of a lightning protection system for the water treatment plant?
I move that we authorize the interim city administrator to execute a contract with RF Fisher for a lightning protection system for Hillsdale Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $19,655.
Motion, Brockstrom, Second Harrison, that we authorize the interim administration, city administrator to execute a contract for installation of a lightning protection system.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I can make comment now?
Yes, please.
Okay. I think that Councilman Freeman made a good point about the, the timing of it. I realize that it's always great when we can find money in the budget, but, you know, if we can take money in the budget and use it for savings and budget this for 2013, I think that it makes more sense.
Absolutely agree.
Plus, I mean, until we find out the system under, you know, at City Hall works, you know, I'd kind of like some history as to whether it works or not.
In the storm season, yeah.
Sure.
If I might make a comment, that you're running a risk in this upcoming storm season, where $22,000 will look like pocket change.
That's right.
If we have a major strike or-
We do have insurance, that covers those, so it makes sense where our deductible would be a $5,000 expense.
It's, it's about the operation of the plant, it's not about recovering the cost.
Sure.
And this is our only water facility, the City of Gardner.
I, in that regard, I would ask if there is an example of anywhere else, let's say in the state or within the tri-state area, where a lightning strike has resulted in a loss of service in regards to water, anywhere else that we would compare it to?
I can't speak to water, I can speak to emergency communications.
Okay.
And I could tell you that the commissioners, when I worked there, and when we had this issue, said, fix the problem, whatever it costs, we cannot have 911 service offline. And it was, I will tell you, far, far more than the price of this suppression system that you're talking about for a water plant, which may not have the same sense of urgency as a 911 communication system, but it certainly is very important to the water and that the citizens in this community rely on. I think early in the year with, we're talking about a rate-supported budget.
Correct.
Given the circumstance, if we have to cut somewhere else, we'll cut somewhere else. I think this is a priority. Staff wouldn't bring you items if in their professional opinion, they didn't believe they were needed. We're not out to do anything for ourselves or to drive around in fancy trucks. We're doing things because in our professional opinion, we believe these are important for the continuity, safety of our employees, and, and for the well-being of this community. These are well-reasoned ideas, we don't, on a whim, think, oh, let's go get a lightning suppression system for the water plant. They're well-thought-through. For $22,000 to wait a year, I would advise against that.
$20,000 is a pretty cheap investment to guard against losing the water supply to a whole city.
All right, thank you, Mike. There is a motion on the floor. Motion, Brockstrom, Second Harrison. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Dave.
New business item number eight. Consider the reappointment of Dave Hayden, Dennis Falls, Cameron Blazer III, Dale Rose, and Lanny Turner to the, excuse me, the Gardner Airport Board. This is an item that occurs at the end of every term, these are, again, mayoral appointments with approval of majority. All of these members have served, they've all indicated they would like to continue serving. In this particular case, what we've done is staggered the terms so that we don't have the entire board coming up at the same time. So a couple of these folks will be reappointed after a shorter, a shorter term. The airport board essentially is a, an entity which manages the operation and allocation of the funds that we provide to the airport. The airport is funded, the operations are funded by the sales of fuel and the fees that are charged for hangar rental for that facility. It is, has been for years, set up as a self-funding entity. Improvements that occur are done through FAA grants, matching funds. We, as a city, would match the fund at the request of the board and then are paid back from the board for those funds. That is the, you know, essentially what, what the performance of that body does. So that is the recommendation I have, that we reappoint all these members to that board. Questions? Is there a motion?
I move we reappoint the Gardner Airport Board.
Second.
Motion, Morrow, Second Brockman, that we reappoint current members of the airport board to staggering terms, as indicated in the council action forum. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. There are no staff updates, council, anything for staff?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Brocksterman, Second Morrow, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Christie.
Have a good night. Enjoy the warm weather.